Sarah is going to walk us through it.
I am, and it's school climate, not as in climate change or sustainability. More about student experiences of school. So thanks for the opportunity to share some of the results from this year's survey. As you know, this is the fourth year of the survey that we've done with students. One thing to tell you just right off the bat is many of you know that the state of Iowa has now included school climate as one of the metrics under the state ESA plan for holding schools accountable. And last year was the first year they highlighted that survey. This survey is more extensive than that survey. It's much longer, it's more in-depth, it's more detailed. So we can talk about what the differences are if you want at the very end. As you know, the state did that. They put the conditions of learning or school climate as a metric for schools in the ESA plan because lots of research shows that students going to supportive, inclusive, equitable school environments not only increase their achievement, but their emotional and social and mental well-being as well. So it's an important topic. I'm glad that the school district here is paying a lot of attention to it. You guys are ahead of the curve and very much in a place to be leaders in the state on this issue. Okay. So there's five general areas that we asked students questions about in the survey. Teacher and adult relationships, teacher and social relationships, inclusive classrooms and school environments, safety and discipline, and social emotional learning. And so what I'm going to do today is I'm going to walk you through some of the results for the district overall, show you some of the disparities or differences across different social groups, and then at the end we can talk about what the recommendations are for sort of how to use this information moving forward. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, so anytime you present survey results, one of the very first things that people say is, "Well, how many people filled out the survey? What's the response rate?" So the first couple of figures here are showing you, overall, the response rate this year was 80%. That's about what it was last year as well. It's about 6,700 students, so the graphs and figures that I'll show you are those students. That's 6,700 students. So the survey is given to fifth through 12th graders, so it's an 80% response rate among fifth to 12th graders. You'll notice that the response rate for high schools is lower than it is for elementary and junior high schools. And then when you look at race, all of the numbers are slightly lower, and the lowest is African-American or black. We put a little asterisk by that because a good chunk of the reason why that number is lower is because many of the students that identify as being black also identify as being another racial or ethnic identity, and so they're multiracial. So we can't include them in the response rates in this kind of a graph. In terms of the demographics of what the survey sample looks like, what I'm showing you here is the gender breakdown. So mostly male and female students, identified students, but also 2% are non-binary or trans. That's about 150 students. So that's an increase from last year. School level, you can see here, 43% of the sample is high school. If there was the same response rate, it would be 50%, right? Because that's half the grades that take the survey are in high schools. So you can see that elementary schools are a little overrepresented in the survey. And then by race here, you can see all the different racial identities, including multiracial and other race. We also asked students to self-identify their sexual orientation, and so we classify them as LGB, lesbian, gay, or bisexual versus non. And so here you can see that 12% of the survey sample that chose to tell us that information, which is about 800 students, identifies as LGB. So when I show you graphs for that, that's about 800 students. Then you can see here, ELL versus non, and IEP versus non-IEP. The last things that we have on students is their parents' level of education. Here you can see that about a quarter of the students don't report that information. It's probably because they don't know it. It's mostly elementary school students that choose not to report that information or don't know it and skip that question. Then you can see free and reduced price lunch and advanced learner status. So those are all the ways that we could disaggregate or look at the data for differences across different social groups. Some of those things are students that self-reported, some of those things are students self-reported on the survey, and others are things that we get from their administrative data, like whether they have IEP, whether they qualify for free or reduced price lunch, et cetera. Okay, so starting with the first section, which is student and adult relationships, we measure a lot about teacher and adult relationships because this is one of the most important aspects of school climate for students. It's one of the most impactful things for student achievement and student well-being overall. So you can see here, I've put down what this year's percentages are. Overall, very high percentages, so most students in the schools have positive supporting relationships with teachers in terms of academic support, feeling like the teachers generally are concerned about students personally being concerned about them, equitable treatment, et cetera. And I've noted here whether or not there's been any change from 2017, so two years ago. And I tracked change from 2017 as opposed to starting in 2016 because in 2016, the sample for the survey was different. It was only sixth, eighth, and 11th graders that year. And so we haven't really talked very much about trends until this year because now we have three years where it's the same sample from 17, 18, to 19. So when we talk about change, we're talking about change from 2017 to now. Okay, so you can see that most things didn't change. That's not really surprising. You don't really expect a lot of these things to dramatically change from year to year. They're pretty stable. All of these things, or most of these things, we measure with multiple items, so we call them composites. That helps us to measure them with more validity, and we understand what the concept is better when students answer similar questions in similar ways. So you can see that the only thing that declined or got worse here is students' perceptions of equitable treatment on the part of teachers, so whether or not teachers are treating students fairly or treating students the same. So I'll sort of walk you through some of the key findings about that. So equitable treatment, this is what it looks like from 2016 to 2019. As I mentioned, we're not going to pay as much attention to the 2016 number there, so if you start in 2017, you can see that it starts going down there. The graph next to it is showing you the differences by race of students. You can see that the most dramatic decline from last year to this year is with Asian students, and the gray bar on the bottom is African-American or black students. So African-American or black students have the lowest percentage saying that they think that teachers treat students fairly. What I've done here on the side there, on the right-hand side, is say, "What do these percentages mean in real numbers?" Because, you know, reports like this, there's lots of percentages in there, and it's sometimes really hard to understand what those percentages mean, right? And so what I've done is I've said, "Okay, if 71% of the black students said yes, teachers treat students fairly, that means 29% that filled out the survey say they don't treat them fairly, they don't treat them equitably." How many students is that? That is equivalent to 311 students who took the survey. 311 black students who took the survey said they disagree that teachers treat students fairly. And I break that number down like that because I think, you know, we hear at the board meetings all the time, students come and talk about their perspective. So imagine this room is filled with 311 black students telling you, "No, I don't think my teachers are treating students at my school fairly," right? That means something different than just thinking, "Oh, 71%, that's pretty good," right?
Sarah, is only, results only on race? Or was it on sexual orientation?
Yeah, I don't know if it's in the report. It would be on page... Paul's asking about whether we broke this one down for sexual orientation. I don't know if we put that as one of the key findings for equitable treatment or not. It looks like we have it for gender, but we didn't give it to you in this report for sexual orientation. But we can break down every single survey item by sexual orientation or gender. We can break them down every single way.
Yeah, I mean, the only reason I asked is because in some of the open-ended responses, it felt like there were some responses in there that were talking about how people are treated, teachers treat them by their sexual orientation, but it wasn't in the graph.
Yes, yes, yes. So we make a balance, so in this case, we wanted to show you some of the open-ended items so that you got a sense of the qualitative nature of when students are reporting, so it's on the next slide. When students are reporting that students, or teachers don't treat students fairly, what are they thinking about when they answer that, right? Because one way is to break it down into the actual number of students that is. The other is to say, "Students, tell us more about this," right? And so at the very end of the survey, the students are allowed to answer a completely open-ended question that says, "Tell us anything more you want us to know about your experience of school or any of the topics that we asked you in the survey." So what we've done in the report is we've highlighted for you, we've pulled out, so we thematically coded all of the responses into the categories that we have, and then we've put little boxes that tell you how many students talked about this topic so that you can put in perspective. Out of 6,700 students, in this case, about 120 students talked about a lack of equitable treatment, right? And so then we can pull out some of those quotes to say, "What are they saying when they report that there's inequitable treatment?" And so some of the quotes here are talking about what that looks like for students. I think one of the themes here is to note that students are saying a lot of times there's inequitable treatment, and what they think of as students, teachers have favorite students. You know, like they treat this student different than the other students because that's their favorite, right? Another thing I wanted to draw your attention to is a lot of the items we have, we either call them general or personal. When we talk about personal ones, we're saying, we're asking the students questions about their personal experience. Do your teachers treat you fairly? Or do your teachers listen and care about you? Versus, which is personal care, versus general care, which is asking the students, "Do teachers in your school generally listen to students? Do they listen to other students? Do they care about other students?" So not your personal experience. So what I'm highlighting for you here is that students in the school district are more likely to say, "Yes, I think that teachers generally care and listen to students," compared to when they're asked about their personal experience with their teachers. One thing that I think is particularly interesting about this is that when you break this down by race and socioeconomic status or parental education, there's a greater match between what students think teachers in general are doing in the school versus what they personally experience. So take, for example, students whose parents have an advanced degree. 81% of them say that teachers generally listen to students. And 80% of them say, "My teachers listen to me," right? But then when you go down to students whose parents have a high school or less education, you see not only that both numbers are lower, but that there's a mismatch, that they're more likely to say that teachers in the school generally treat students fair or with care and that they listen to them versus, "Do my teachers do that with me?" There's a gap there, right? And you can see the same thing with African-American or black students. Yes, the numbers are lower for them overall, but there's also a mismatch where they're less likely to think their teachers care about them than their general perception of teachers overall. One of the things that students also reported in terms of teacher-student relationships in the open-ended comments was sort of, you know, on the job performance of teachers, right? They of course have perceptions of not just their relationships, but whether or not they think teachers are doing a good job. And one of the things that many of them described was what they thought was a lack of cultural competence here and ability to be responsive to different social identities that they carry. So you can notice that one of the quotes here is about, it might be the one that you're thinking about, is about whether or not teachers are using the correct pronouns with students or not. Then the last thing I just wanted to highlight is student voice. This is a new item. It's a couple of items that are asking whether or not students think that they have a say in what happens in the classroom, whether they're consulted. So student voice or student engagement and participation and these kinds of things is something that a lot of people are advocating is positive. Lots of research shows that it's positive for students. So you can see that about 50% of students say that they have an opportunity to, that they say what they think is best in school or in class. And this is, it looks really low compared to the other ones, but this is about what it looks like at a national level, that about 50% of students in junior highs and high schools will report having this level of engagement. One of the things that I think is really interesting about the student voice is about 150 students used this opportunity to tell us what they thought we could do to improve school climate or schools. And of course, we like to pull those things out because we like to hear what they think would improve schools. And so one of the things that is really a key theme here is lots of the students said that they think that teachers and schools need to recognize that they need more emotional and mental health supports. So that's something that they're asking for and saying that they would like to have. Another aspect of adult relationships, it's not specific to teachers, is whether or not students have a mentor in the school. So we ask, "Do you have an adult in the school that you trust you can go to for advice?" And we code that as having a mentor. And you can see here, 81% of students have a mentor, so really high rates of having a mentor. Slightly lower than that have a teacher mentor. So if you have a mentor, we say, "What role do they play in school? Are they a teacher, another adult, a club supervisor, or a community member that comes into the school?" So you can see, of course, really small numbers for club or community mentor compared to something like a teacher mentor. Not big changes in terms of mentorship over time. One thing that I wanted to highlight for your attention is, yes, there are racial differences in who reports having a mentor, where white students are the most likely to say that they have a mentor. But where you really start to see the discrepancy or the differences across students with different racial or ethnic identities is the percentage that report having a teacher that is a mentor. And here, you can see that white students are much more likely than any students of any other racial or ethnic identity to say that they have a teacher mentor. Teacher mentors are the most impactful, especially for academic achievement, so this is something, you know, that should get people's attention. The last kinds of questions that we ask about adult and teacher-mentor relationships is whether or not you get support from adults in the school. So that is how the questions are wording. Do you get support from adults in your school about social issues, emotional issues, and mental issues? So when they're answering this question, they could still be thinking about teachers, but it's asking them more globally about adults in your school. So you can see that students are much more likely to say that they receive academic support from adults in their school than receive social or emotional support. And you can see that these numbers have not really changed the last few years that we asked it, and some of the open-ended comments speak to this as well, with students saying that they're more likely to go to a teacher where they need something academically and don't feel like they can do that same thing with social or emotional issues. One of the other things that we ask about teachers is whether or not students have heard hurtful comments from teachers in their school, and we ask whether they've heard hurtful comments about race, gender, sexual orientation, immigrants, and religious identity. Here you can see, race, we've asked since 2016, but we'll ignore that first thing since it was a different sample. So you can see that if you start in 2017, all of these numbers have slightly increased since 2017. Really, the increase was from 2017 to 18, and they're more stable now, right? So that is something that is not necessarily specific to the Iowa City Community School District. We also saw increases in things like this at the university. So this is, you know, an uptick with the election and post-election sort of climate, if you will. But still something to be concerned about, you know? So, I mean, these numbers are relatively high, right? Where 1 in 4 of your students are saying, "I've heard hurtful comments about race or sexual orientation from teachers," and about 1/5 of your students are saying, "I've heard hurtful comments from teachers about gender, immigrants, or religious identity." So what about peer and social relationships? So that's all about adults or authority figures in the school, right? So what about your peers? So we ask about school attachment or social belongings, questions like, "I feel like I fit in, I feel like I belong here." So really high, 81% of students say, "Yes, I feel like I belong here," and that's been pretty consistent over time. We added two new sets of questions about positive peer relationships. One about general peer relationships, so do students at your school have friends that they can eat lunch with? Do they have friends that they trust and can go to? Things like that. Versus your personal, do you have friends that listen to you and that care about you? So both of these are really high, so that's good. So most students are saying, "Yes, I have friends," and most students in this school have friends. So some of the things that we pulled out to talk about, what do they, when they think about negative things, so I'll show you some bullying and harassment and negative comments from students in a minute, but some of the open-ended comments that we got from students about peer relationships were really mostly negative as well. So they talked a lot about, you know, different forms of sort of gossip or things that are either considered harassment or bullying or just not positive interactions. Sorry, I apologize that the yellow is so hard to read on this, but that's why you have a head up. Okay, so harassment and bullying. So for two years now, we've asked students a question about whether they see bullying and harassment at their school. So the question is, "Do students at your school harass, bully, or intimidate students?" And then it says, you know, "Because of appearance, gender, race, all of these different things." So they can say yes or no to any or all of these, right? So they can say, "Yes, I have observed students bullying or harassing or intimidating each other on the basis of their appearance." And you can see that that's the most prevalent form of bullying that students are not experiencing personally, that they're saying occurs in the school that they go to. So about 50% of students say, "Students are harassed, bullied, or intimidated because of their appearance," followed by gender, race, or ethnicity, disability, sexual orientation, social class, religion, other, and national origin. You can see that these are all slightly going down, so that's good. So a little bit less this year than it was last year, so going in the right direction.
It feels, this one feels a little dissonant with the slide. I don't see the slide number, but the teacher and adult relationships, we're talking about the trans hurtful comments about immigrants and religious identity, that seems to be going up.
Yeah, we'll show you the comments for, so harassment and bullying is on the part of peers, right? So do students do this? I'll show you hurtful comments from students after this. So that was the one you're talking about was for teachers?
Teachers are going up, this is where students are going down.
So this is bullying, harassment. I'll show you the, here, I'll just go to it down. Hurtful comments from students, that's these. So you can see that they're still really high, right? So yes, they're going down a little bit if you look at that same, so the bullying and harassment is 2018 to 19. So you can see less students this year compared to last year are saying there's hurtful comments about race from other students. So those are consistent.
I think you're sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. All right, so these are general bullying, right? This isn't your personal experience, just doesn't happen in your school. I just wanted to pull out a couple. Even though students are saying, are not reporting on their personal experience, we do see racial, gender, and socioeconomic status or sexual orientation differences of observing or noticing. So part of it could be an awareness, but part of it could just be, you know, they are actually reporting on their own personal experience. Because what we see is students who identify as LGB are much more likely to say that there's bullying and harassment on the basis of sexual orientation. Non-binary or trans students are much more likely to say there's bullying, harassment on the basis of gender. Female students much more likely than male students, and all non-white students are more likely to say there's race-based bullying and harassment compared to white students. When you turn to personal experiences of bullying, these are new questions that we just added for the first time this year. You can see that verbal bullying is the most prevalent form of bullying, followed by social, cyber, and then physical bullying. What you can see on the right-hand side is, if you said, "Yes, I've experienced one of these forms of bullying," then we asked you, "How often do you experience this kind of bullying?" And so what this graph over here is showing you is the yellow is more than once a week, the light gray is once per week, and then the dark gray is once per month, and then the black is a few times a year. So you can see that, you know, a pretty small percentage, you know, about 30% to 40% of students are saying either once per week or more than once per week, so frequent bullying. They're experiencing these forms of bullying very often, right? So, you know, the black is...
I would argue that's not a small number.
Yes, okay, I shouldn't say it that way.
That's 30% of our kids.
It's 30% of the number to the left, but still, that's 5% of the kids are experiencing that on a daily or weekly basis.
Yeah, it's, that's a lot for frequent bullying.
How many definitions are there of verbal bullying and social bullying?
Yeah, the definitions are slightly different, so...
And the social bullying too, like...
Yeah, I mean, the students have the definitions there in the survey when they hover over them, and we put the harassment and bullying definitions on the pages with these questions so that they understood. Because it, one of the parts of the definition is that it's habitual, you know, and it's done intentionally. So the verbal one is something like...
It's in the glossary. You guys are all looking at the...
Yeah, it's in the glossary of the report.
It calls on the name as opposed to just isolating them.
Yeah, it's like social exclusion. It's like not letting somebody sit with you or whatever. That's like the social bullying. The verbal bullying is like teasing them, things like that.
So I'm just curious, some of the cyberbullying. Did you ask that question of fifth and sixth graders also?
Yeah, so what I'm going to show you here is the elementary, junior high, and high school. So you can see which ones are the most prevalent in the different levels of schooling. So you can see the elementary here is the gray. So you can see that elementary and junior high are more likely than high school students to report verbal bullying. They're also more likely to report social bullying. There's not really a difference in cyberbullying. And physical bullying is lowest in the high schools. So hurtful comments from peers or other students. So this is not specifically bullying and harassment. This is just asking, "Have you heard hurtful comments from other students about race, gender, sexual orientation, immigrants, or religious identity?" Here you can see, these numbers are very high, you know, so all of them are over 50%. So lots of students are reporting that their fellow students are saying hurtful comments about these things. The highest ones are about sexual orientation and race. So for sexual orientation, 77% of students said that they've heard hurtful comments from their peers about sexual orientation, followed by 73% about race. So, you know, those are very high. 3/4 of the students saying that they've heard hurtful comments about these things. This is just showing you the race and gender differences, so who's more likely to say that they've heard hurtful comments from their peers about race or gender? Well, for gender, it's non-binary or trans identified individuals are the most likely, much more likely than male or female students to say that they've heard hurtful comments about gender. And Asian students are the most likely to say that they've heard hurtful comments about race from their peers.
How do you find this compares to national districts?
Yeah, you know, I don't know off the top of my head. I could look back and see the other districts that use the same questions. Yeah, I don't remember. All right, so that was all about relationships. Relationships are really important, right? Both your relationships with teachers and adults and also your peer relationships, but we also ask questions about whether or not the classrooms are inclusive in a couple of different ways. We ask whether or not the curriculum and materials that are used in classes are representative and inclusive. So that's the first one here. There's not really a change. So 84% of students are saying, "Yes, you know, I'm represented, I see positive images, I learn about achievements of people that are like me." And you can see that all the other ones increased. So these are all about opportunities to talk about different social topics or social issues, so opportunities to talk about race, gender, sexual orientation, and physical or learning abilities. So you can see those increased slightly from last year, and you can kind of see the percentages there of, you know, what percent of students are saying they have opportunities in class to talk about these things. The other sets of questions we ask about inclusive classrooms are, one about classroom membership. So we ask questions like, "Do you feel valued in the classroom? Do you feel like your contributions are valued in the classroom?" And you can see here that 77% of students agree with those statements. That number did increase from last year, and then the other two decreased, and they're green because that's good, because the other two questions we ask are, "Do you feel unable to share in class due to your race or gender?" And that number got smaller from last year, so that's a good thing. We don't want any students to say they feel unable to share in class due to their race or gender. Some of the things that we ask about safety and discipline, so previewing your next topic after I'm all done, is safety. So one of the sets of questions we ask is, "How often do you feel safe in different places around school?" So traveling between home and school, outside around the school, in the hallways and bathrooms, and in your classes. What I'm showing you here is the full distribution of all of the responses, so they could say, "I almost never or almost never feel safe in my classes, I sometimes feel safe in my classes, I very often feel safe, or I always feel safe." So here, all of these things increased. What I'm saying is the percent of students that say they always feel safe in these places increased, so it got better. One thing to note is that last year, the survey was given at the same time as it was this year, which is in February, and so about half of the students took the survey after the Parkland shooting. And so your safety numbers went down last year, I think in part because the Parkland shooting happened, and that's on the mind of students when they filled out the survey. So the safety number going, safety numbers going up, you know, I'm not sure that that trend would continue necessarily, you know, there's a dip in the data, I think, for a very specific reason. But you can see here, depending on where you want to draw the line, you know, so about 57% of students say they always feel safe in class, whereas less than 50% of students say they always feel safe in all of these other locations, you know? And still, that means that quite a number of students are saying they either only sometimes, never, or almost never feel safe even in their classes. So we pulled out some of the open-ended comments to say, "Why is it that students are reporting not feeling safe? What are they talking about when they say that they don't feel safe?" And so more than 100 students, 114, described experiences where they felt uncomfortable, scared, or unsafe. So the first quote over there is talking about how, you know, that when this person is in class, there's bullies or somebody screaming outside, and they're scared when they're sitting in their class that something's going to happen. So that's the kind of thing that this particular student is thinking about. You can also see that 95 students described concerns about safety at school in terms of thinking that there was inadequate security or, you know, anxiety about physical things happening like school shootings, okay? So moving on to disciplinary environment, we ask a lot of questions about whether or not students... So moving on to disciplinary environment, we ask a lot of questions about whether or not students perceive the discipline, uh, to be things like fair, equitable, consistent, transparent. All the, uh, things that we know are positive about disciplinary climate that can be positive. So one of the things we ask about is fairness, so equity. Uh, are the rules applied fairly? Do students get the same punishments or same rewards for doing the same thing? So those are the kinds of questions we ask about equity and discipline. Uh, so just like we saw declines in, uh, students' perception that teachers are treating students fairly, we also see declines in students thinking that discipline is being enacted fairly. So that's consistent, they're both going down. They're similar kinds of questions, right? Uh, and they're both going down. However, some of the other dimensions of disciplinary climate, uh, increased, they got better. So disciplinary consistency, are the rules, uh, applied consistently when somebody misbehaves? Are they, uh, treated, uh, the same way? Uh, strictness, so strictness is not a bad thing, so strict is not punitive. Uh, and then transparency, no change. So transparency is like, do students know what the rules are, things like that. So some of the open-ended comments, uh, that students said about discipline, um, you know, some of them were about the inequity, some of them were about, uh, punishments being too harsh. Um, some of the students suggested, uh, that they wanted more restorative, uh, practices used, uh, unless punitive responses for rule breaking. Uh, so those are just some of the quotes that, um, kind of highlight those. One of the things that we also ask about discipline is responsiveness to discipline, to, to bullying or harassment and other things that are, are problematic. And so we ask, do the school, does the school respond, uh, in a way that you think is effective? We ask, do teachers respond, uh, and make, uh, clear that bullying is not allowed? And do teach, do students respond? So what you can see here is that there's no change in whether or not teachers are making it clear that bullying is not allowed. Very high percentage of students are saying, yes, teachers do that. An increase in saying that teachers stop bullying when they see it happening, that's a good thing. Uh, a decrease in students saying that the school takes appropriate action. Uh, this is something that can, of course, be that the students don't know what happened, right? That they reported something, and then something happens behind closed doors, and they don't know, right? But the one that I would point your attention to is whether or not students think that their peers stop bullying when they see it happening. It's lower than the rest substantially, and it's decreasing over time. What that really speaks to is more about bystander trading, right? Do students know how to respond when they see it happening, right? And I think the last thing that we ask, if I remember properly, about safety and discipline is the use of restorative practices. Um, so we ask whether or not students and teachers have opportunities to work together to solve problems. That went up. Uh, there was no, uh, change, uh, from, uh, last year to this year in whether or not there's opportunities to practice ways to settle conflicts that makes it so everybody's okay with the result. Uh, and then a new item we added is whether or not students have an opportunity to explain something when they're involved in, in a, in an altercation or something discipline-related. Am I, all right, still with you? You still with me?
Yep.
This is super interesting, right? You guys are right, I'm ready to talk about safety. Okay, so last section is social emotional learning. Uh, so we asked a bunch of questions about what would be considered, if you know the Castle sort of five dimensions of social emotional learning, would be considered social awareness. Uh, so we call them appreciating diversity, cause they're kind of all about social values around inclusion and diversity and things like that. So we can have both general and personal questions. So they're questions like, you know, is diversity, equity, inclusion valued at your school? Do students respect each other's differences? Do adults respect each other's differences? I'm accepting of those that are different than me. I know it's wrong to discriminate, uh, questions like that. So you can see that they all went up. The one that's the lowest, not surprisingly, given the, the high rates of bullying and hurtful comments, is students saying that students respect each other's differences. So three-quarters of the students saying yes, students respect each other's differences.
But ninety-six of them say, I do. So that gap is interesting to me, that almost everybody says, I do, but would you say the other kids do?
Mm-hmm.
It could be found in.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely.
Some perception.
Yeah, there's also social desirability bias. When you ask people, is it wrong to discriminate? Do you do something that you know you're not supposed to do? Most people will say yes, even though they might really say, in real life, I, no. So there is a mismatch there, but there's also more social desirability bias when they're reporting on yourself. Okay, what about things like empathy and perspective-taking? So these are some of the core competencies for social emotional learning, right? To, to make it so people can interact with each other and, and understand how other people are feeling and know that what they're doing is impacting other people. Uh, so no change in the personal and general empathy. Here you do also see much higher rates of saying, I care about other people's feelings, and I understand other people's feelings compared to other students understand, uh, other students' feelings, uh, and know what they're doing, how it's impacting other people. And perspective-taking actually increased a little bit. The last set of social emotional learning questions that we ask, uh, are, uh, sort of an eclectic little group here. Uh, the first one is growth mindset. We ask, uh, questions about, you know, are you able to overcome academic challenges, things like that? So it's growth mindset as opposed to fixed mindset. Not surprising that it went up in the district, given that you all expanded the Avid program, and Avid is, uh, one of the ways through which growth mindset is written. That's a very big component of the Avid program. Uh, so self-management, uh, is a question about whether or not you know how to control your emotions. Uh, and then teamwork skills is, you know, do you know how, did you learn how to work well with other students in order to solve problems? And that's a new item. So, I went over a lot of the district trends and just pulled out for you a couple of specific instances of disparities or differences across social groups. The vast majority of the report really is about the disparities or differences in student experiences, because that's one of the things that we highlight as something that could be addressed, uh, by the district in different ways, not only looking at the overall averages, whether they're going up, but also whether or not the group disparities or differences across students are getting bigger or smaller. In the executive summary, we highlighted for you some of the places where things are getting better. Uh, so there are some significant, uh, improvements in disparities among LGBT students, uh, and non-LGBT students. Um, but there are some persistent or consistent disparities, uh, along race and class lines especially. Um, so that's kind of the synopsis. Uh, but I also wanted to, of course, highlight what we would recommend you do with this information. These are all research-based sort of, uh, recommendations. So lots of folks have recommendations on how to use school climate data effectively, uh, and to do it, uh, with fidelity. Um, and so these are the top six recommendations that we came up with. So the first one is, is pretty basic, just ensuring that district decision-makers such as yourself recognize the importance of school climate, uh, and support efforts to increase student experiences, uh, you know, positive experiences in school. The second one, uh, is ensuring a consistent, uh, way to collect this information with a reliable and valid survey instrument. Uh, you pretty much have that with the partnership right now. Uh, you also now have that with the ESOP plan, with the state doing the conditions of learning surveys. So you've got plenty of data now, uh, to inform any decisions you want to make. The third one is really kind of starting to get at the heart of the matter, which is using this kind of information, uh, in an integrated way to do your improvement planning process. We've done that a bit already for the last two years. We've, uh, used some of these metrics in the CSIP, the Comprehensive School Improvement Planning Process. Um, so, you know, that's great. Uh, the next one is a little bit related to this. Uh, this is in all of the recommendations about how to best use this information, is to create school-based climate teams. So just like you have school-based teams for lots of things. Uh, and one part of this recommendation, uh, that lots of schools are not currently doing here or elsewhere is to include not just teachers and admin folks at the building level, but also to invol- involve, uh, parents and students in that as well. Uh, five is, uh, identifying what you're currently doing to improve school climate or student experiences, uh, and also to look at other options for things that you could be doing that are research-based, right? So lots of schools are doing things in their CSIP. They need to say how they're improving school culture and climate on the metrics. Um, so one thing would be to not just identify what they're currently doing, but to make sure that it's aligned with some sort of research, uh, evidence of being effective. Um, and then the last is to help with this, uh, whether or not things are being effective, to evaluate in a more rigorous way whether or not some of the things that schools are trying are actually moving the dial the way that you expect them to. And we have lots of acknowledgements.
Back on that evaluation plan, it's just, it's more than just the survey, I mean, that we do every two years. I mean, the kinds of evaluation to, to determine that the interventions are working. I mean, ideas around what those, uh, what those evaluation processes would look like?
Yeah, so, um, so we do this survey every single year.
Every year, okay.
Yes. Um, so we can use this data to help schools identify whether or not what they're doing is working. So right now, we give the schools their data, uh, each year that shows them these same metrics specific to their school. So one thing that would take it to the evaluation stage would be to identify from their CSIPS or, you know, through conversations with them, what they're currently doing, and then look more specifically at the metrics that you would expect to change. And that, that would be like an evaluation light, if you will. Um, the other thing that we can do is make sure that we do the teacher, uh, survey each year. So we skipped that this year. Would be another way to assess, uh, whether or not some of these things are working. Cause in the past, we've always had teacher and student surveys, so that we can ask similar questions to say, teachers think that's getting better, but students don't. You know, because both perceptions really matter for whether or not the climate is inclusive. You know, cause having an inclusive climate is important, not just for students, like we talked about at the development group last night, but also for staff and teachers.
How many, how, how many questions in the survey, and how long does it usually take?
There's just over a hundred items in the survey. Uh, each year, we've actually reduced the number of survey items. Um, and on average, it takes students like seventeen to twenty minutes. We group similar items together, and we put them in little segments to try to make it so that the burden is reduced on the students in terms of the survey burden. You know, like we put similar items and have them go in the same direction so that they can figure out the questions pretty easily. Yeah.
Very, very, very helpful information we have.
The N is impressive.
Yeah. Yeah, no, a lot, lots, lots of the principals, uh, and other folks in the schools actually do a really good job of, of making sure that, uh, there's time allocated to take the survey each year, which is very helpful, especially for the disaggregations within schools.
I, I guess one question, why, why is high school so much lower? Is that norm, do we, is that normal every year?
Yeah, it's been normal every year, it's actually increased every year. Uh, so they started out really low, and they improve every year.
I mean, why is it different than...
You try to tell high school students what to do.
I, I think older kids think it's more optional. You know, like when you tell a younger student, we're gonna take the survey for twenty minutes, they're like, they're rule-following, and they'll do it, you know? And as the kids get older and older, I think, you know, even if, we give every teacher that's gonna administer the survey the same script to say out loud, I think even if you said the exact same thing to all the students, you'd have less participation in the high schools. But, it can always be encouraged and improved.
Can you give it to them on an app?
Uh, we don't allow them to take it on their phones. Uh, so this is one of the sophisticated things about the survey. We don't allow it to be taken outside of the school building, so we map it to the IP addresses of the district computers. Uh, and they have to be on the school premises when they take it. That way, teach, that way, parents can't take it, uh, and students can't take it repeatedly. Uh, so we want them to take it while they're experiencing the school, so they're thinking about school while they're taking it.
So they have to do it on a Chromebook if they're in a high school? They can't do it on their own computer?
No, it has to be one of the school district's computers.
Well, that could explain some of it for high school kids.
You guys don't have Chromebooks?
Mm-hmm. No, we all have Chromebooks.
They do, it's just, they don't all use them.
High school students sometimes bring their own devices.
Ah, I see, I see. Maybe you could have a bring your Chromebook to school day?
Every day. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, another thing the district did look at, if they really wanted to get the high schools up is incentivize participation, so that's not something we've ever done. Uh, and I don't necessarily recommend it, but that is something that gets response rates up with. We do it at the universities, uh, to encourage undergraduates to take the survey.
How do you do it there?
Incentivize it?
Let's, let's, let's be incentive.
The incentive is that they're entered to win, uh, different prizes. Everything from like a five-dollar gift card to Java House to, uh, you know, iPad or something, you know? So every five hundred students is entered to win, uh, whatever the prize is, and they go up as you want people to take it more and more.
At high school, I guess we could do prom tickets or something.
I don't think that would be bad.
Yeah, no, I, I, I wouldn't necessarily recommend it, cause it would, we would have to account for that.
That was being facetious.
Yeah, okay. I'm sure there's other things you could spend money on.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure a lot of them drink coffee, that's a, that's an idea.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say that we're saying that...
Yeah, yeah.
Crazy, I mean, great data. And how, two districts in the state are doing this with us. Are any other districts doing anything like this?
No, no, that's why I said you guys are poised to definitely be a leader in the state. Yeah, so you guys have a lot more information than other districts have. And a lot of districts now are gonna be, now that they're getting their school climate data from the conditions of learning survey, they're gonna be asking, how do I do something about it? And so you guys could always be a model for, you know, what you've done in the past years, and how you've learned from your experience the last few years, and how you're improving on that, so that you can help the learning curve of other districts.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we'll move to the next item, um, around our school safety advisory recommendations. I know we have some local, some... There's a few seats left for me.
Yes.
Several.
Yeah.
So, welcome, folks, thanks for joining us. Hi. I'm just really looking for some guidance on how I wanna manage the conversation and kind of get into the conversations. I know we've got the, the safety committee recommendations in the presentation, which we've heard and gone through. Um, we've got some specific items that we wanted to talk about. The, um, the threat assessment team and, uh, SROs. Um, we wanted to call out discussions around student help, and then finally, um, to have a short, a short conversation on the safety promise. And so, um, do we wanna just refresh ourselves with all the recommendations? Or do we all feel pretty comfortable, that we understand them, or we're pretty receptive to them, and we move straight into talking about the specific recommendations on item two? Does that seem reasonable? Yeah?
I made copies of the recommendations that we distributed, important numbers, things like this. I didn't make extras for everybody.
So, um, using that structure then, um, the multi-disciplinary threat assessment team. My sense from our last conversation is that I think...
We're gonna go over all of it. So do you want the police officers that are here to also, also...
Yeah, I mean, I think for sure we wanted to have, yes.
There's two by Sean.
There's two.
Um, so thank you, welcome everyone. Um, so the first one that was up for discussion was on the multi, multi-disciplinary threat assessment team. And, um, I think we're looking for some more information on what that looks like, how we would implement that. Um, and so I know that other departments have promised to start that off, or some of our guests have comments of hate maybe, or sharing the safety committee ideas on how to push this forward. I think there's general agreement, yes, we need to do this. I think it's more on what are we going to do?
Right. Well, I will let you know that in the last, I think it was about a week or so, just a week ago, we actually submitted a grant requesting funding for, through the SBPP project. And with that, we were requesting money to put together a threat assessment, um, team, and worked closely with, uh, our various police departments in that application process to, to gain their support and also input on what that would look like. Just to kind of give you an override, an overview of what that would look like. It's, it's based on the US Department of Homeland Security's Enhancing School Safety Using a Threat Assessment Model. And it's also endorsed by Sandy Hook Promise. It's the same model Dewey Cornell that they are, um, looking at training and implementing as well. But what the goal would be is to establish a multi-disciplinary threat assessment team. a multidisciplinary threat assessment team at each secondary school, who will direct, manage, and document the threat assessment process. And we would also look at having the school district provide support and trainings to the school-based teams organized by a threat assessment coordinator. And that's partially what we were looking for funding for through this grant. And we look at establishing district protocols and procedures for threat assessment in collaboration with threat assessment professionals and law enforcement, local law enforcement. And this would include who would interview students, who would talk to the classmates, teachers, and parents, and who would be responsible for documenting the team's efforts. We'd have teams meet on a regular basis, and they would engage in professional development, role-playing scenarios, learning activities, and they'd also meet whenever there is a concerning student situation that is brought to their attention. Now, there's many components to this. And I would say the one thing, if I would have to think about why this is so critical at this point in time, with our Say Something campaign that we've been implementing this year, we have the reporting tool, again, another Sandy Hook endorsed program. We have the tool, and we have not provided the curriculum or education yet. That's something we're looking at doing next year. But even with that tool, what we have found are many reports coming in, increasing amounts of students that are notifying us of potential threats. But with that, we don't have a process for assessing that very well. So right now, we're just doing the best that we can. And what this would do is develop a system for assessing the level of a threat, a student or even a staff member or outside community member poses to the community.
And one of the things that the grant is also requesting is working with some consultants, so that we would have materials and people brought in to conduct training. Part of that, like the first people that we met with, with the Dewey Cornell model, they would do a one or two-day, full-day training with the people who would kind of be core team members at each building. But then, that would also include follow-up and accountability, and just kind of, you know, helping with implementation throughout that first year. Because what one administrator versus another administrator, you know, might gauge as an appropriate response, there needs to be some kind of continuity. And so, there are already these things in place. There are already these, you know, and, and there are tools that are used. So it kind of takes out what feels like it happened a lot this year, which was, you know, who got to the information, how seriously did they take it, who, you know, who did they talk to from there, and, you know, it's, there was not, there was a lack of kind of coordinated district-wide system. So it asks for that as well, training and follow-through.
Why would we not use our elementarys?
I think it was just to get it started. We had to start somewhere.
I mean, I'm just, if we're gonna have threat assessment teams.
Right.
Most of the reports were secondary. Like, the really big safety concerns were all secondary.
And I think the idea is to start.
In my head, it's the Sandy Hook Promise. That was a moment. I mean, shootings are a part of this, right? There's no doubt about that. And we can't, I don't think we can pretend that our elementary schools are protected.
Well, I think the idea was to start somewhere, and then if you had a concerning report, you would have a team that would come down to an elementary level that could help to assess the situation. But I think we're just thinking of a starting point.
And I get that we want to pilot and do things well, but I just think if we're gonna talk about safety and.
Sure. I just think a couple, for instance, is maybe, you know, useful here. And also acknowledging that, you know, we have a, you know, a system of, you know, high schools that have schools feed into them, you know, and so when we're looking at making safety assessments, we're looking at the community oftentimes, and what's coming into the school. So I would be natural for a safety, you know, assessment team that would, that could reach more than just the high school, for example. But when you get a report of a student who may have said something, you know, what do you do with it? And if you got, one principal says, "I know this kid really well, he says crazy things all the time," you know, and another one says, "Oh, I'm gonna, I want him out of my school," we have to come up with a system for dealing with that. We also have threats from outside our school, such as a monious divorce situation, where you have, you know, somebody who's restraining order against them. And so, you know, we get information from the police in this case. You know, what do we do? How do we handle that? What do we handle with kid pickup, pick up and handoff, and that kind of thing. So it's very easy to just jump to worst-case scenario thinking, but we can't do that. We don't have separate boxes, you know, for, you know, to put all these different, you know, threats in. We need a consistent and informed way of doing that. And the only way to do it is put a team together.
So would we be imagining like a threat district-wide, and then each school would have its own threat assessment team?
And I think one of the other issues that came up was budget constraints. So one of the things that came up repeatedly at the safety committee meetings is the feeling that we can come up with a system, but we also lack a person who would have that role of doing those assessments.
Yeah.
And so, you know, one of the things requested was that, but to provide that for the entire district seemed unrealistic, and we might not get a grant anyways.
We heard, the committee heard from the University of Iowa on how they do it. I mean, you can imagine, they get, you know, concerning reports from dorm situations, and, you know, they have to make assessments about this, and they do the best they can. But, you know, they have three full-time people that, you know, work on this with a team. They just have the team. We also heard, you know, from Lincoln, Nebraska, you know, other places, you know, where they are trying to coordinate this. And, you know, Lincoln was instructive for us, because they're very, in a way, fortunate. They're just one municipality, and it covers the whole thing. And so they can do it all in one unit. We have five municipalities, county, you know, six really, you know, to, might have, that might inform our thinking. So there's just, there's, there's a lot of work to do, number one, you know, just in, in setting that. But we do need to have a broader perspective than just school officials. You know, we need to bring on this threat assessment team, not just, you know, the principals talking, you know, or, we really need.
And we'd involve law enforcement from every municipality and county?
We would have to figure out how to do that, you know.
Well, let me, let me ask this. I know Iowa City's here. Are all the other municipalities interested in participating?
Yeah, they actually helped on the, they were actually supportive of the grant, wrote letters of support for the grant. But I would also say with the threat assessment team, when you have teams trained, some of the things they're looking at are how to avoid problematic threats and behaviors and concerning, concerns that you may have with students. So some of the things that, what we do is develop that systematic approach for looking holistically at students. So you look at their performance. Do they have a decline in performance? Is there increased absenteeism, withdrawal, isolation, sudden dramatic changes in behavior, apparent, or parents' drug use, depressive behaviors, other emotional and mental health concerns. And that would be a part of the work that you're doing. And then at that time, teams would intervene and offer support. That would be one of the things that they do on a monthly basis. So part of what we're looking at is what are the assessments that we would utilize? What are the things that we're going to look at as a regular, on a regular basis? And we're looking at putting together a database through Qualtrics to do that, which we could do for free, because our district works with Qualtrics. But then, you know, having that systematic process, but then also having a team that convenes in the time that there's an actual threat. So you're doing both of those things at, at the same time.
And I might add, just one other scenario. We have students that come into our community all the time, and sometimes they come from, you know, very restrictive environments, and we're just left to guess, you know. How can we, you know, fit the program that they had in the southern environment into our school district? And it's not a comfortable feeling.
Well, you're looking for a stovepipe organization, or your threat assessor, and myself personally, I'd rather it be referred to as care assessment. And when I spoke with the University of Iowa, very early on, when I got on the board, that's how they referred to it, as care assessment. Because if there is a student in stress, they need assistance, they need care, they need help. But what you're looking for is a stovepipe entity that gathers the information that when you have a student's house that is under stress, and the police department might have gone there fifteen times, that the school doesn't know about. But yet, you notice a student is having some performance issues or things like that. But those dots are connected. Because we see many times nationally where, after the event, it seems very obvious there was, there were some concern, there should have been some concerns. But information that one entity had didn't share with another. One question, and I just, I apologize to interrupt earlier when we were on that, but you said you're working on a grant. Is that through Grantwood AIA? I thought that was explained to us as, as how our grant pilot, pilot, practice went about.
No, they're, they're writing it in conjunction with municipalities.
Okay. So in this, any, and, so this is, and the, and the grant is to fund this, this individual that they're, or individuals to head up this, this assessment team and work with our other partners?
Threat assessment.
Yeah. There were several components to it. It was through the cops office.
School violence.
C, CBPP.
Yeah.
Community, we're in a policing office. It's a, it's a, it's a US DOJ's office, national office.
Okay. So I have a question about that, Greg, when you said, and kind of Phil about connecting the dots. So say a kid is coming from a restricted environment. So we're gonna gather this data, assuming we're allowed to. So that would be my question, too. You know, we disturb kids in hospital, and they, parents don't want us to say anything, anybody about that. So I, so are you just saying, when we can, no? And then that's my question for law enforcement. So what sort of barriers are there for detention, or to, to sort of share with a school, the kind of information Phil's talking about? Oh, hey, we were called to this house fifteen times in the last two weeks. Is that, can you do that for me?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, a lot of that's open records. Some of it in a sense of safety, you know, we would certainly share that information to, to get the job done and not violate anybody's rights by doing that. You know, release the appropriate amount of information. That's the good part about a multidisciplinary approach. Everybody brings their resources, their individual talents, staying in their lane, but working together to come up with a solid solution before something happens. It's not a statement of threats. It's what's the risk of the threat occurring that we need to find out immediately.
That's what I was, because the way it's written here is going on reported safety threat, or reported threats. I wanna be more monitoring levels of threat.
Well, and we find out through the reporting. They say, "Hey, Jimmy said this on social media," or "I heard this," and a lot of times it's third person. But at three in the morning, when that goes down, and classes start in four hours, we need to get on that. And so this multidisciplinary approach, including law enforcement, allows us to have 24-hour access, immediate action, you know, calling in everybody on that team to, that we need to determine what the actual risk is, and then take the appropriate actions to make sure that the community, the school community is safe, and that the child is getting the attention they need before arrests happen, before they're suspended, before something bad happens. That's what this is about.
I guess my question is, is anybody, I get an on-the-board question, is anybody opposed to that? And if not, so what's the barrier? Just having a coordinator? Like, what's stopping us from doing this in July?
Because the point is, we're doing it ad hoc right now. As you said, we get the reports in, we try to figure out how to respond. It's not consistent. We don't have a defined protocol. People aren't trained. So we're kind of, sort of, doing it ad hoc. Because we have to, because we're getting reports now through, say, the, right? So.
So what's the barrier?
And training and a systematic approach.
How much money?
Probably ask for a ton of it.
Yeah, I mean, just consider this, I mean, you know.
Sixty? Yeah. We just kind of, sort of, the county department helped put that there. It's the base salary for a coordinator.
And then we also put in a screening tool for social media.
Right.
Software to do that.
So if you can imagine.
Just like for, to look for potential threats.
I know you're spitballing, but total cost, I mean.
Oh, yes.
Is it like an administrator-level cost, is it like? With software, with everybody's.
It's a coordinator. We put in a coordinator position at, at about sixty to sixty thousand without benefits, probably.
What was your total last?
Two hundred fifty thousand, for two years.
For two years. And that included the consulting, you know, training, and then the social media alert and training.
So we were looking at training not only for school district staff, but also for law enforcement as well, so that we were working together.
Because one, one thing you guys talked about in the hardening side, and that we brought up in the last meeting that we were all together at, was that, I'm cracking my mouth, the schools would like the same, it's like a consistent officer that responds. I mean, that would be helpful.
Oh, yeah.
And so like, you know, that, and that officer would also want to be trained in this stuff that you, you know, Georgetown Project, or whatever it was that really went through. And you guys don't have that right now, as a responding officer, right?
Uh, just one?
Yeah.
No, 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 we don't. We have one investigator. He kind of picks up the backside of it, but when you call, it's just one officer, or, I'm sorry, it could be any officer. And that may still hold true, even if you, if you had an officer on your staff, which, which we'll talk about here shortly, I hope. But if that were to happen at any given time, when that threat comes in, that call comes in, we wanna get there quickly, hold it down, mitigate any issues happening, and then start gathering some facts and call in the proper people to pick that ball up immediately, and do, take a holistic, multidisciplinary approach at addressing this. So I, I wouldn't sweat the, the initial officers showing up. What you worry about with inconsistency is who's gonna run with that case. And, and that's where it gets a little bit broken up. And that's where you want that consistency. You want the relationships with the students, the staff, the faculty, the procedures, policies. Everybody knows what's going on. Everybody knows their role. And you come in at a standardized approach. It's proven that it works. And that's where you get your success.
And just, certainly, we'd want mental health or health, you know, people on this.
I was gonna ask, who were the members of these teams?
I don't, I can't imagine that's gonna be very cheap.
I'll give you an example.
If I can, just, just, just quick. You know, we, we were fighting for an Agans structure, and it was gonna, we were told initially six hundred thousand dollars. Then, then we'd find down, oh, seventy. We couldn't find seventy to do our normal task of education. And now we're getting a low ball on this one of sixty K? No way. This, that, this, this is gonna be, this is gonna cost a heck of a lot more. And you're gonna want someone who's more than just clerical. This, this needs to be someone with, with some skills and talents that's more than just clerical and, and record-keeping.
So let me give you an example of what, what we're doing now. So we started training in threat assessment a year ago. We started working with the university and said the same thing you did. Our officers need to be a little more tuned in on, on how to respond to threats, and do it, do it according to what the, you know, what oil is. So we trained four officers in several levels. General threat assessment, K-12 threat assessment, overall student threat assessment classes, moved on to conferences, went to a couple with Iowa City schools. And we started working with Eli Hotchkin, who you've, you know, over at the university, to put together this, this Johnson County Threat Assessment Advisory Team. So I'll give you an example of who would be on this team, when you talk about who, who are the role players. University of Iowa Police, Iowa City Police, Johnson County Sheriff's Office, Corvail, University of Heights, obviously North Liberty, the Johnson County Department of Human Services, the Crisis Center, jail alternatives person, the county attorney's office, Kirkwood Community College, Iowa City Community Schools, Iowa City Veterans Affairs, University Hospital, Hospital and Clinics, Mercy, Fifth Judicial Department of Corrections, Juvenile Court, Domestic Violence and Abortion Program, and the Rape Advocacy folks. So that's, that's the kind of folks that you start to get involved between advocates, mental health professionals, hospitals, law enforcement, school administrators, everybody, every discipline. Now, they're not all called in on every case, but you decide what you have and who you need to weigh in on this to make good, informed decisions with a favorable outcome. The, the system works. Secret Service started using this decades ago to, to figure out how to protect the president. They went, "You know what? The more we look into this, and the more we share information, and the more data we keep, and decide who needs help, and are we doing the right thing?" And, and like, like you guys said, if, you know, are, are we addressing it, and are we documenting that we addressed it, and, and is everything being taken care of that should be taken care of? That's a recipe for success. So all these players need to, to train together. They need to know each other's roles. They need to know how to get hold of each other. And I'm talking about wee hours of the day, you know, and so be it. And our guys are the first one, the gals, the officers are the first ones to show up. And our guys are the first one, the gals, the officers are the first ones to show up and, and stabilize things, and then we take care of business from there in a good orderly fashion. The way we do it now is, is reactive at best. And we're doing arrests, we're doing, you know, suspensions, uh, and we're doing things out of order. And we all know that we need to do it upfront, so our officers are taking, besides this threat assessment, crisis intervention training, um, you know, and we're having great results with that. Um, so, you know, we're just trying to do a, a lot more things and collaborate with a lot more groups than we ever have before. So I say all that to say this, you guys are hearing terms like D M C. It's a thing. And so anybody that says disproportionality is not a thing, it is. So we as law enforcement have to be careful how we address things, so it is fair, it is equitable, equitable, but it's also effective. And the only way to do that is train well. We've got some of the sharpest officers in the state. We're seeing trends go down in juvenile arrests. We've gone from four hundred and five juvenile arrests in two thousand and thirteen to two hundred and twenty-seven in two thousand and eighteen.
Is that Iowa City?
That's Iowa City only. Um, so last year we saw a twelve percent drop in and of itself. So for the last six years, the trend has gone down in those arrests. We also saw a fifty percent reduction in charging Hispanics, and we saw about a fifteen percent reduction in blacks, uh, black juveniles. So, you know, the persons of color we talked about with D M C, we understand that, we're sensitive to it, and we're looking for better ways, such as this threat assessment situation, to, to make an impact, get out in front of it before stuff happens, we don't have to arrest, so you don't have to suspend, keep the kid in school, get them the help they need before it happens. We're happy to be part of that solution. Um, you know, we talk about, about S R Os in all the schools. I get budgets, you know, I'm, I'm thirty-six years in law enforcement, but I certainly know that you can only spend X amount of dollars, and you have to prioritize. So, you know, I'd love to see seven officers inside all the secondary schools. I also know budgets are, are pinched. But I also know beyond that, that if we shove seven officers in schools, there's a huge concern about D M C. And that the last thing I want to do is rock that boat and have it turn out negative when we intended it to be positive. So I always say crawl before you walk. And if that means one officer to get on this team, maybe be a full-time member on your staff, they're housed here, not in a school, they're working with, with whoever the coordinator is as a team, and we've got immediate access to other things Phil just talked about, did a domestic go on that's affecting this child, or is there something else that, that we need immediate information on? We can get that. And, uh, same with the FERC side, you know, we, we, there's certain things we can't know, but we can certainly bring a team member to the table that can help resolve the issue and know the facts to get that out there faster. So that team approach can work in a non-enforcement role, um, but bring that level of expertise. So we've already started training in that area, we're certainly willing to be part of the solution. Um, it just depends on, on what you folks want. We're here for you. When I introduced myself last year, I said, if you need something, call. Well, I think you need something, so I'm back. So.
One quick question. You talked about a lot of the training that, um, the police department have their officers undergoing right now. Um, is implicit bias one of those trainings?
Not just, not just are we training in implicit bias, but some of the very people that you're using, Sarah Brooke, is one of our trainers. So, you know, we, we're way ahead of that. We've, we've quadrupled the amount of training that we take in procedural justice, implicit bias, and culture diversity to understand what the ramifications are and to address those. Our officers got big hearts, they want to save the world, especially the young ones, and, and they're all doing the best they can. You just got to teach them how to do it right.
Same in Colorado, North Liberty?
Well, yeah, and I've talked to those chiefs, and to be honest with you, I think there was a lack of information on actually being here tonight, uh, when I talked to them, but they are certainly on board with this philosophy.
The training specific.
And that was written into the grant. They were at the table for those decisions.
Yeah.
So they've had the training?
Well, I, I don't want to sit there and speak for the chiefs, but I will tell you, I, I meet with them twice a month.
That's money for them to, right?
Sure, yeah, but they're certainly on the same page we are, and I don't want to speak for the chiefs, so there'd be a time when you can do that. Um, but, you know, at the end of the day, rather you, if you say, hey, let's bring the law enforcement on in this role to partner with and have them housed here and, and, and do that, uh, whether it's a North Liberty officer or Iowa City officer, whoever you choose, that's up to you, but if that happens, we're certainly, my agency's certainly prepared to step forward with somebody and do that. Um, but, uh, you know, at, at the end of the day, I, I don't think status quo is a good idea. I don't think not having law enforcement involved at some level is a good idea. We're, we're aware of the issues, we know the negative impacts we can have, and we can certainly be part of the solution. So I offer that up.
I think what you said, uh, something that's supposed to be toxic or negative is really my concern, because I understand, like, concept, what people, you know, are talking about when they say events, S R Os, but a lot of people I've talked to have said, you know, that would make them feel less safe or that they feel they would, some, a lot of students, especially students of color are, can be, feel nervous around cops, a lot of students can feel nervous around firearms. Um, and I, I think that with the discipline gap we already see in the district.
Yeah.
And with the study we've seen on S R Os and their impact on schools, I think it would be wiser to limit that interaction.
Sure, and so, and that's exactly what we're doing. So this, we're not talking about a uniformed officer housing a school in a hallway.
Well, careful though, because a lot of people in the community are absolutely talking about that.
Well, and, and I know it, so here's, here's my point. I, I would love to put seven people in your hallways. I don't know if it's the best thing for Iowa City. So I, I'm offering you, uh, uh, thinking outside the box, another solution to say, maybe there's a better way to get this started and at least be part of this threat assessment team and have it, you know, housed right here where you have immediate access and where that officer has access to the police department, a conduit, if you will, a liaison, twenty-four seven, uh, and have that immediate impact. But I share your concerns, and, and, you know, this officer that I think of helping out with this would be in plain clothes, maybe a sport coat or something, gun not visible, whatever the case is, uh, when they are having to interact with a student, um, in a situation. So soften it up, you know, and, and be there more as a, a person that's looking to, to mitigate issues and, and, you know, address the problem in, in a non-enforcement way. So that's, that's.
I appreciate your, your vision for this.
Sure.
I'm, you know, have, one, we're pretending like we have any money, frankly, okay? So that's real. I mean, we just have to say that. I'd love to have all the money. I, I do believe we have to, as a community, be communicating better and more. Um, I'll tell you that, you know, the thing about, I, I, and I appreciate the training and saying, you know, police officers are doing a lot more of the social, emotional piece, but at the end of the day, you have a gun and there is enforcement piece there. And I can tell you, we need probably twenty-five more social workers in our schools. The, the level of mental health concern is, and this isn't just in Iowa City, statewide, it's, we're bursting at the seams. There, there's almost never an open bed on the inpatient unit, and most of those kids are our kids.
Mobilizing a threat assessment team, multidisciplinary, where it's a variety of disciplines coming to the table, not under your payroll, is the way that, it's a force multiplier for you. Organizing that and training in that aspect and putting that in policy and practicing it is the key. So you don't need twenty-five social workers, you need one or two people that can mobilize those that are already doing this and be able to address your problems.
I tell you, you may need twenty-five more. I mean, I'm, I'm just telling you.
Well, you know what I'm saying, if you can hire twenty-five or more, but. I don't know anybody can hire twenty-five social workers.
I'm, I'm just trying to say, I think the magnitude of the mental health crisis, I don't think it can be overstated.
Right.
It's, it's truly, I mean, and look at our data, when you talk about violence, twenty-five kids said that was a concern out of six thousand seven hundred seventy-seven, twenty-five. So the violence, if, because we've heard from community, violence is out of control in our schools right now. That's what community commenters tonight said, and emails we've gotten said that. The principals are saying, schools are violent, behavior's out of control. So one, I got to know, is that true? And if it is true, why have we not heard about it before community commenters and emails ever get? I mean, I was at West High when it was over two thousand kids, and we, there weren't problems. There, there were times we brought in an officer for a, or, you know, he was an officer at the time, but that was his background. I don't know how successful that was, but one, I have to know, because the community's saying our schools are really violent now, unprecedented levels. Is that true?
I would say there's a number of higher profile issues down the stretch of the spring that have resulted in that perception by some. Nothing could be further from the truth in terms of out of control violence at City High School, and I'm sure that's true of West and Liberty. We had an unbelievably smooth, beautiful year from a standpoint of, um, violent disruptions. I mean, we had, however, um, you know, I mean, I don't know if this is out of order in answering your question, I do support an S R O in the building. I don't think that stuff is sufficient. I think it's, I, I, we're in, we're one of the only schools in the entire state at of our size not to have one. Our head is in the sand, and I believe in it because, um, there, there's two reasons why I would like to see that in our school. Number one is drugs. It's not violence, it's not disorderly conduct behavior. We have made so much progress in that regard. You know, that was a big concern ten years ago in this community. I tell you what, that is, uh, almost nonexistent, knock on wood, in our schools today. You, you, we were, we had a very low level of altercations and disorderly behavior at, at City High this year. Drugs is an issue, and not just at, at, at our schools, but nationally. Get, um, educated about the rise in marijuana, um, uh, not just marijuana, but marijuana-based products. Um, it is a serious concern. Odorless, um, vaping devices that we cannot, I mean, we, we are chasing, and I'm telling you, it is a serious issue, and it is harming kids. I'm sure you see it. I am very concerned about the damage it's doing. I do believe that an officer in the buildings would be a significant deterrent to the, the exchange and flow of, of that stuff in our hallways, and I think we need to do everything we can, because I think that those products are having a very harmful effect on kids. And, and it's, it's increased in, in the time, in the past decade. Um, so that's one of the reasons. It's not the main reason, for me. For me, and, and some people say I'm wrong because this is too dramatic, but to me, there's one reason that was to have it, and that's in the event of the worst-case scenario. It's extremely unlikely, and I get that, extremely unlikely, right? I mean, what are the odds of the school shooting? However, we have pretty short memories. I mean, a year ago after Parkland, our students were having walkouts because of school shootings, right? And there were no walkouts about school shootings this year.
There were.
Um, well, maybe, but not, my point is, where, where did that conversation go? You know, and, and to me, in the event of that awful worst-case scenario, which granted is very unlikely, I, I just believe that, of course, that's no guarantee of a successful response. I certainly understand that. However, I like our chances of a more successful response, a heck of a lot better. If there's someone in the building in a position to do something about it, if we're calling law enforcement, the damage is done. You have two thousand people in one location in almost every bastion of society when you see that. You, you would have some measure of security, except we don't when our kids are, are, are the audience. And so, uh, that's the reason I believe in it. And so, you know, I, I think that kids get arrested and charged, I respect, you know, the concern that you raised, kids get arrested and charged at City High for two reasons. If they are in possession of an illegal drug or, or a controlled substance issue, or if there was a significant disorderly issue where somebody got hurt, and we have a criteria that we work through for making that decision. Those are the only times that, that we call law enforcement and a charge is filed. I don't see that changing. If, we do that now. We do that now. So if, if either of those things happen now, we call and those situations are processed. It happens not very often, but, but, um, to me, if the officer was in the building, it'd be the same thing. And, and I, I just think those situations are the times that a charge would be filed. And maybe I'm wrong about that, but what, the reason, I'm almost done, the reason that I believe in it is in the event of the worst-case scenario.
So in that case, John, we would have to have them in every school.
Well, I mean, I, you know, what I, I hear that, but, I hear that, but, because the high school is, I just think, my logic would be it's most likely to occur at the biggest schools. That's where I'd start.
Sandy Hook, literally.
But Sandy, but sorry, but what you mentioned earlier, Sandy Hook, the shooter wasn't a student. Um, and so, I mean, threat assessment would be much harder at the elementary level because the shooter's less likely to be a student.
So to me, there's a difference between threat assessment and having an officer, because truthfully, if an officer's in the building, they would have to be in the exact right spot. Because my guess is the response time from one end of any of our high schools to the other end is almost as much as the response time that the police have now. And maybe I'm wrong, though. I measure response times pretty quick.
Well, yes, S R O's job isn't, isn't necessarily to sit and wait for the big catastrophe. Certainly, he knows the school best. He, you know, he does mentoring, he does training, educating, counseling, you know, at, at a police level, not school counseling, but, you know, so he's doing a lot of other things, risk assessment, helping with threat assessment, and being part of that. In the event that the, that the worst-case scenario happens, then obviously it's nice to have someone in the school that's responding immediately and going to the shots. If that doesn't happen, if that officer's on a day off, all bets are off, it's the first responding officers, which would be just within minutes, but, you know.
I think we have to have a little perspective that if you really want to take that logic, we, you, you're talking about a couple of million dollars. I mean, you're really talking about a significant investment away from education. Safety's important, but when we're in the budget and priority, you're talking about a major shift in allocation from the classroom.
Is there an armed officer at the hospital? I'm honestly asking, I don't mean this to be sarcastic.
There are not armed, exactly, that's a good point. We have twelve to fifteen thousand people come through the hospital every day. The ninth biggest city in the state of Iowa, and there are not armed guards at the hospital. There are security guards, but not armed. They're C P I trained, which frankly, we have better training now for behavior in the district than C P I. So, and I'll be quite honest, there's some of the same guys you might have seen at the old Capitol Mall walking around. So, so that, that's the level of security the hospital has. If there's an incident, we're going to call in law enforcement. Uh, you know, so, yeah. It's a different environment. I'm not going to say it could really compare to the hospital or high school, where everybody's compact and everybody's the same age. Um, however, I, to me, yeah, the hospital hasn't seemed to go, you know, they even have, they don't have university police, aren't, you know, it's not like a regular station that they have at the hospital. It's a, security guards that are hired by the.
But they do have threat assessment housed there.
And I, so I know, I'm not saying anything against threat assessment, but to, to automatically say threat assessment means an S R O in every secondary building, I think that's a reason. Because, and I think, one, we'll cut off our nose and spite our face. Threat assessment is critical. The fact that we don't have it, we're, I don't know if we're behind the ball for what high schools are doing, but my guess is all those other four A schools that have S R Os don't have the kind of threat assessment we're talking about at that level. And to me, that's way more, the communication is way more important, and probably not something we can really say, well, maybe we can do this, maybe we can't. We're probably at this phase where we have to, we have, I mean, we all know, because we all work in our individual silos, I'm sure with the same kids and we don't know it, we have to be talking. That's the thing that kills me in the hospital. I don't get that release, I can't get that information from school, which absolutely helps doctors make a determination on, is this person safe to discharge? Do we really know what's going on with them? Because we're really only getting one side of the story here. So that's the thing for me in the hospital, when I get that release, and the doctors feel this way too, who they want the information from the most? The school. They want to know how that kid does in school, because that is going to tell them more, you know, parents and students, kids, patients are wrapped up in the story themselves. Sometimes school is that, that objective third party that can say, hey, we have seen the declining grades, we have seen an uptick in behavior. And sometimes we help the school say, oh, this kid should be on our radar, and oftentimes the school helps us say, okay, what, what level do we have to do to help this kid? And, and without that communication, you're guessing. And so to me, I, you know, my opinion is we have to move forward with the threat assessment team. Whatever that looks like, whether we can afford to hire a person housed here, whether that's law enforcement who's the center coordinator of that, but they have to be people who work with law enforcement and who understand it and who can work with the school and social work, the courts. You know, and we're doing a lot in Johnson County. We're doing diversion of juveniles, you know, we're doing a lot of work with juveniles to, to lower arrests.
It's working, it's working.
And it's working. I, I don't know that all our municipalities are doing that because I don't know what the other municipalities are doing.
Yeah, they, they do the same diversion we do.
Ruthie is trying to jump in.
Sorry, I just want to say, I mean, I think Jody um made a good point. We have to crawl before we can walk or run. And um if you just pay attention to our annual progress report, in our office referral numbers, it says a lot. So to automatically think having an officer in our building will shift the dynamics of the amount of black and Latino students that they won't have that same interaction that they're having with disciplinary staff, be with office referrals. I, I don't think that's realistic. I think we have to take into account, and I hate that um the comments that I know the board, especially you, it's, it's really starting to divide our community along certain lines. And if you say it's not, I think you're kidding yourself. Because we're giving this very strong racial division on whether or not this is right for our community. And I think before we have something just blow up in our face, we have to figure out ways to improve security and that sense of security, which starts with threat assessment team. We cannot automatically, I mean, that's what we're, I think as a district, we're good at, throwing everything into the mix and trying to get everything to work out. We need to start and focus on something, get that figured out, and then if it's still something people wanna see happen, move on to the next steps. But for me, it's telling that our office referral numbers, fifty-six percent are all, are from last year, was black or African-American students. Still more if you combine everybody else that came out to be forty-three percent. Something is wrong with it. And to say that that won't either stay the same or increase, I, I just don't buy it based on what I see we're doing as a district. We're not there yet to treat all of our kids the same way. And then to throw in the mix a uniformed officer that has to follow certain guidelines. We see it on a national level. Students being arrested for certain things, it's not going to change. It will make things worse. And we don't wanna put our officers in that position nor our community.
Well, yeah, thanks, Ruthina. I mean, that was the point. We're working on this, and it's a heavy lift. I mean, I, I, I don't think, I think in schools we appreciate it, but the demographic change in Iowa City has happened quickly. And as a community, we, we aren't good at it. And it's interesting, the perspectives, you know, part of this is, is some of my work on the Equity Committee or in the Conference of Equity Development Team. But more was going around this summer and talking to different groups about their perception of our district. And if you're a non-white, your perception of our district is, it's, it's so different that they just laugh about it. They're just like, of course it's racist. Like, they don't have any, and I don't wanna call people racist because I don't, I know that people aren't intending to do that, but, but people of color's experience is that they're not welcome in our schools, our community, not universally, but enough. And, and I know we spend a lot of time talking about teachers and administrators, but a lot of that is really our, our frontline folks. Secretaries, custodians, kitchen folks, it's, it's just, it's an attitude, it's a way people talk down to people, it's a judgment that's there. And, and we're, we're just beginning to work this out. I mean, we're just beginning to do MTSS and PBIS in our secondary schools, you know? Some are for the long, and others, but we're just starting to do stuff that we know is a gold standard. And we know that it works. Lincoln's a great example of a place where it is working at a secondary level. So that to me, it feels like we, again, we've spread our net too thin. We try to do everything instead of focusing on these things that we've already gotten placed. I mean, the climate tells you, this is now three solid years of data that show very consistent numbers across the board that, that show us the work that we have to do, and we're doing, but when you start to dig into it, holy smokes, you realize what a heavy lift it is. To get everybody, our, just our folks, on board, even admitting that there's an issue. I mean, we have a long way to go. We have a number of people that are like, there's really no issue. Why are people complaining so much? Not many people of color are saying that, right? But, but we have folks that are still, so we're, we're on a continuum. Some of our folks are like, you know, doing the heavy lifting in the middle of the development brands, our students, teachers, admin. And some of them are on the fringes, not owning up to, to the reality of the situation. And it's with the weight of that, it's um, it's a lot.
What I don't, I'll say it as a police chief, the public shouldn't be offended by hearing those numbers and understanding there's, there's DMC out there. They shouldn't be offended by that. I'm not offended by it. We need to fix it. The numbers exist. So when Roy Sam Porter stands in your, your front end here and says, we all know a cop's due to black and brown kids, she's the first one that'll step up in my office and sit down and work out a problem that I'm having in the community. She works with us, she supports us, and she's results-driven. So when she says those numbers, but yet she's part of the solution, it's a good thing. And so I expect that to, to hear those numbers, because like Dan Gable says, you gotta fail to learn how to win. And so if we're failing in a certain area, let's think outside the box, let's work together and let's fix it. Don't deny it's happening, don't say, well, there's, it's just the way it is. Well, blacks commit more crime. It's, that's not what this is about. So it's about smarter policing, working together as a team and addressing these issues. So, you know, I'll say, you know, the, the public shouldn't be offended by hearing this. They should say, let's step up and fix it. It's what we're doing, and, and I think we're, we're the ones putting the cuffs on folks. So if we can do it, the public can support that effort. So I appreciate you saying that.
And, and just to be clear, it's our office referrals. So it's not even, before you guys get in the door, it's us as a district. I mean, and no offense, we have, I know we have good people in our district. But it's us in the district, we're not doing our job.
So there's DMC and suspensions, there's DMC and arrests, there's DMC and charges for pot. We, we all know that exists, some of it ties together though. This goes back to the threat, the multidisciplinary threat assessment. Let's catch this up before the suspensions and before the crimes happen, and, and that'll help fix that. So, but don't leave us out of the solution.
And I, and I appreciate that, and I, I mean, I, I really do, which is frankly, aside from threat assessment, because this is a threat too, this is safety too, kids don't feel safe, the social emotional piece, right? And I, and, and the more we all, in this community, UIHC, University, all of the law enforcement, courts, schools, the better it's gonna be, all of these conversations, because my belief is the folks who are invested are, do see it. And we do have the vision and we are moving in the right direction. To me, the hard part is the how, right? Those are the things we're trying to figure out. And so the more we can have that team that's communicating about all these things, bringing all those issues to the table, and the group you mentioned, that's a comprehensive group, um, I believe it's all gonna get better. And, and by focusing on the social emotional, I hope that more kids don't hate. I mean, that's what I hope, right? That we help our kids from K through twelve so they don't wanna engage in it, you know? And I, I mean, I, I believe we can do that. I believe that we can get to a place where those bullying numbers do change dramatically.
This is a hard conversation because in my view, everyone's made very valid points. You know, I think your point jumping around, none of us want the unmanageable to happen. Sandy Hook, or a suicide attempt, no one wants that. And you wanna, our heart wants to put everything in place to prevent that from happening in our schools. And so I, I actually understand that impulse and if SRO is one last line of resort to prevent it, then I understand the impulse. I also understand what Ruthina was bringing forward around, and, and we've been talking about the disproportionality that exists, it's real. We've got documentation, uh, and all kinds of ways to support that. And there's also, you know, so much of the data that we've been presented from people commenting, we need comment in the emails that we've gotten, pro and con SRO. I mean, there's lots of data out there to support or to not support these approaches. So that's what this is tough for me on, and, and because I see so many valid points across the spectrum here. But back to the crawl analogy, even if we were to have SROs, we would have to have a threat assessment process in place. We would need to have this disciplinary group with a protocol, knowing how to assess, how to respond, how to bring the right resources in depending on the specific nature of the threat. But that, that's, that feels like a foundational step that we just have to do. And, 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 and we couldn't leap to having an SRO in all of our secondary schools, much lesser all of our elementaries, unless we had that foundation of how we're gonna operate in, in a, in a, in a planful, uh, process-driven holistic way. So that's, that's sort of where I'm landing. This is step one that um should help us not be ad hoc, help us have a consistent approach, bring the right resources, the right disciplines to bear, um, and then see where that gets us. How, you know, where, where do we look like once we have that in place? What does it feel like? What is, do our numbers change in terms of our climate survey? But I, but I'm also, and I said this at the last board meeting we discussed, that we, we have to focus on some of the other programs that the committee, people with recommendations on, say something in the suicide prevention, um, some of the mental health screening pieces. I think those are all kind of root cause preventive, like early awareness identification to, to, to prevent these tragedies from happening as best you can, at least from students in the, in the buildings. So um this can't be just a one and done. There's not one thing that we're gonna do that's gonna solve this problem. It's gotta be a range of those recommendations. But I think the threat assessment, to me, feels like it gets us out of the ad hoc, make a call and hope for the best. It's, I mean, and we do a good job, I mean, all of us do the very, very, very best we can, but it, it's that consistency of, of response with proper training feels important. So I'm, I'm supporting the threat assessment as well. I think it's foundational. I hope we get the grant, can we get a copy of what was submitted? I'd like to. Yes. Just to see what was included there.
I can send that to you with the copy.
Because if we get the grant, then we can have the funding and resource to at least do this first two years worth of work, right? Um, if we don't, when will we know?
Great question, that's a great question. Actually, we received a call from them today, but I haven't, we, we weren't able to talk to them.
Well, whether we have a, I mean, some of this, I think, can just start with communication. Like, I don't think we have to wait to hire a person to say, let's talk to all, you know, to put, start to put together a plan. And that might even give us more of an idea of what, maybe we, maybe it's a six thousand dollar person, then maybe it's a hundred and twenty thousand dollar person. I don't know, but I think we have to have an idea of what does this look like? Because we could probably communicate without, I think, it feels like we could start a process to, to start to bring this together. And then for the board's perspective, from a budgetary standpoint, what does this look like from resource allocation on our end? Whether you, or not you get a grant, because I assume grants are gonna run out, so we're always gonna wanna have, wanna have a way to, like, this is not something that we can bring in and say, well, the grant's not, we don't have, just, I think we have to.
Well, a systematic approach would be in place after that. There's a system ability for.
I can say it, no, we already did.
So I, I, you know, I hope that we don't have to wait for that grant or to feedback to start communicating with one another.
Do you expect to have a communication issue?
Yeah, I mean, we really already can, except for the, um, for both challenges. And the state declares that when there's a multidisciplinary threat assessment team, that the people on that team from different disciplines can share that information. And so you don't have to have the release, which would be huge.
So we just have to declare that we have a multidisciplinary threat assessment team and so therefore we're allowed to share data?
Yeah, what's that, what's that process?
Yeah.
Exactly.
I have, I can look into it further.
My understanding is if the officer's employed for us, employed by the school, that's one thing. But sitting outside, it may be a different animal. It just, it just kinda depends on the, the situation.
Because with that team, right, like, some of those people aren't gonna be employed. I mean, I guess that would be clear to know, like, who, so when this threat assessment team comes together, how much information can they share legally?
Right.
And then what, what do we need to do to say we have?
So even if the officer undergoes FERPA training that all of our teachers have to undergo?
See, I, I don't know. I, I, I'll give you an example, HIPAA. HIPAA has law enforcement exceptions for emergencies. So when, when it's a, a matter of, you know, public safety, imminent danger, then we're exempt from HIPAA. We get that information. FERPA may have a similar loophole there, I'm just not positive for non-employees.
Because even the threats that maybe are imminent danger, but we wanna have this coordination because we might just have a kid that's struggling.
Right.
And somebody knows that, and the school needs to know it. And so maybe it's not an imminent thing, but it, because sometimes things become imminent and it's too late.
Sure. I, I mean, you know, we're already doing a version of this. It's, it's not as proactive because we're not, it's not formal. You know, but we, we deal with these, these kind of things quite often, you know, some type of a threat. Every jurisdiction I've worked at, we've done that. So the process is kind of there, it's just not fine-tuned and it's frustrating.
I mean, and sometimes you're working with situations and, and you're working with a school that's in one jurisdiction and the student's home is in another jurisdiction. And then.
Yeah, it happens.
When you have a, go ahead. Okay, so we can talk now, but not everybody knows if we can talk. And so we had a student um who was in a Corvus school, but lived in Iowa City, who made very specific and, and concerning threats um about shooting people in the school. And so there was a law enforcement component, there was a hospitalization component, obviously the school was involved. And so we were making, well, I was making regular contact with JPE. Didn't hear, didn't hear, um, was not assigned to JCO yet, so we're still kinda unclear. And this is, again, like, this happens every time where we're just like, hey, does anybody know what's happening with such and such kid? And so um I was leaving messages. Finally, I did talk to the threat assessment coordinator at university hospitals, who then at least interceded for us. And I finally got a call. That student had been released five days before. And the police didn't know, the JCOs weren't even on it yet, and the kid was out of school and now completely mentally ill with a grievance. And we had completely lost track of that student.
And that happens often, more than one, I think that's, so I think, and it's great to say, yeah, we'll try to communicate. You need a systematic approach. And for the high flyer cases, you need somebody that's coordinating that efforts and is making contacts with every single agency to make sure everything's falling in place the way it needs to. The problem when you have, you have, you know, you have a certain amount of cases across the district, but you, in one particular school, that may be the only case that they deal with all year. So it could be in Northwest. And you need someone to come in and say, okay, this is what we need to do. And you go through a process, and then you can't fall through the process.
It feels to me like we need that.
We need that. I mean, right now, we're doing the best we can for a single community, but it's just ball drops.
Kind of approach.
It's not even ball drops, it's not a process.
Yeah. So is that, I mean, is that something we can just say, please go make that process happen?
This is, this is. And doesn't Sandy Hook promise you have some free, free stuff?
Pardon me?
Sandy Hook, don't they have sort of a free?
Well, the process.
You just need the.
But then you need, you need to put together the systematic approach and the process. And that's why we, we looked at a grant, because this would be, this is, this is a, this would quite frankly be a full-time job. Because now you need to put together the appropriate um, the systems, whether it's checklist to go through, you know, if there's a threat in it right now, whether it's a threat of suicide, you know, what exactly checklist do you go through? What, are they a low-risk, high-risk, and what other things do you need to look at? Grades, you know, and, and then you, and outside supports and whatever else that you need to be taking a look at. But it's a process. And then you need a database where we can have information that's accessible. That's why we wrote the grant.
And I'm, please write the grant.
We already wrote it.
We can get it submitted and write more.
We did get a last, we did get one other grant. We can talk about that later.
Do we have an alternate plan that we happen not to get the grant?
Not right now.
Under other, other sources, are there other groups that would go after the grants of this one?
That's what we were hoping since we already have it written. Thought if we could find it, we'll just keep submitting it, but I think it's well-written, we're very hopeful.
There's only sixty in the United States that are granted.
If anybody's can, if you're still interested, the, except, it, it's a thing that's pulled from the exceptions to purpose consent requirement. So we already said in, in connection with the health or safety emergency. Um, and then additionally, as discussed in section one, schools are encouraged to have a designated threat assessment team. Members of the threat assessment team may share student information with one another because they would all qualify as school officials per, per, purposes. For instance, team members that are school employees qualify as school officials. And team members who are not school employees qualify as school officials because they perform outsourced inspections.
So it could be someone from the police force, it could be someone from the AP, it could be any of those, or some services groups that we're talking about.
Yeah. And sometimes it's really complicated, it's really, it's, you just can't get to wear it and it's, you know, it's a lengthy process, yeah.
CHS is involved.
Right, there's some other reason.
So what else do we need to cover tonight? I'm, um, I mean, I, there was another opportunity, I was thinking some of the idea there was just, there's a lot of free material um and resource. And a lot of that's been pulled already in the second quarter. And then, you know, maybe there's programs there. I don't think Molly, Molly's not here to kind of cover it all, kind of, you know, she's a leadership person with Sandy Hook. So I'm not sure if anything we really should cover there tonight, but, I mean, it feels like, let me get a copy of the grant proposal, um, uh, that, and that, we'll be keenly waiting to see the response on that. It sounds like threat assessment is, I'm looking at board members, if there's anyone opposed to progressing with a threat assessment, multidisciplinary approach, that feels like foundational work that is gonna have to happen regardless, right? Step one. Step one. Am I?
I think we need to think about Plan B though. If the grant doesn't come through, what are we gonna do?
We still need threat assessment.
Yeah, I mean, that's, uh-
It doesn't go away, so, yeah, knowing that there's other, other resources, other options, I don't know.
Yeah, we've talked about it, a lot of it has to deal with having the manpower to do it. Uh, and so, we don't have the manpower to do it right now. So, that's part of our budgeting process looking forward. We just don't have the capacity to do it.
Maybe we need to change some allocations then or something, because we have to-
Can you provide us with a copy? Uh, sorry.
We can't find a way, so, you know, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, maybe we, far be it for me to say, but, you know, some, some adjustments then somewhere should make this happen.
We have to stop doing something else in order to assign somebody to do this.
And I already missed that.
I mean, I, I get it too, so we're gonna all, can we make calls campaigning for the grant? We all know a call campaigning. Um, but, I mean, we're, we're doing this ad hoc today and I'm hearing school principals saying we need something. Um, we're hearing community members saying we need something. We're hearing, you know, students are not feeling safe. Um, I mean, we need to do something. We need to get a coordinated management together, um, with training and protocols and, and so, I, I don't know, I don't know that status quo is what we can do. So, if this doesn't work out, like you put it, again, it doesn't work out, then I'm aware we need a Plan B, you know, Plan C. You know, if Plan B doesn't work out, what's Plan C? Because I don't think status quo is going to be sufficient.
My only question was if you could provide us a copy of your list of the different agencies that, that you see. Uh, one alternative might be, instead of one entity taking a $200,000 bite, if every entity were to take a $15,000 or a $20,000 bite, it might be more palatable because it is a community service for all of the community. And if we can get, if we can get all of the municipalities onboard-
And the county.
And the county, right, exact, right. Uh, every, and we're throwing a big glass soup and if everybody chimes in, uh, because it's easier for us to find $20,000 than it is to find $20,000, as it would be for any other entity. We've got Hills gives-
$25,000?
$25,000 a year to the elementary school, and that's, that's a tiny, tiny little community. So, uh, it's important to all of us.
And I'm just wondering if we were to get the coordinator role, and there's already so many things that we're doing, whether it's implicit bias training, you're doing all the safety training annually, think Alice and things like that. I mean, don't some of those things kind of wrap up under this overall threat assessment protocol?
Yeah, with under, and that was the idea with that coordinator, not only would they be responsible for threat assessment, but risk assessment, which is one of those, also rolling out the Say Something. Those are the three areas that we looked at having.
So, it's a way to kind of bring these sort of isolated programs under an umbrella to make sure we're getting related, all organized and on the proper sequence.
Mental health awareness training.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's interesting, Kate, you said you're getting so much feedback from the Say Something? Then I remember Paul saying that one of the feedback was, a lot of kids didn't even know about it.
Well, that's, well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, here's the two students that were on the committee and neither one of them. You know, and, and, and remember, that's also driven by, if the kids don't see results and something's gonna be done, they'll stop.
That's exactly it.
If you're gonna do it, support it.
Even kids trying to report bullying or harassment or sexual harassment, they don't know where to go. They don't know who to call, they don't know what's gonna happen.
They also don't believe that it's anonymous.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's, that's a really big thing. And then when they do report or someone does report, they don't give enough information for us to go find them because it's so anonymous. So, that's another thing that was, um, very important.
But that's part of the training piece through Say Something. However, what I would say is when, when we start the curriculum with Say Something, with Sandy Hook, it is a Sandy Hook curriculum that we're rolling out next year, we will get more reports on. But what I'm saying now is without having a curriculum, we've increased the reporting and the reports are alarming. That's the problem and we don't know how to handle them.
Yeah.
And there's some pretty serious things.
Yeah.
So, I imagine that will increase.
But this, this, it's, okay.
Grant, list of agencies, Plan B.
CVA.
CVA. Thank you all for coming.
Thanks.
You guys got a harder job than our city council, Mr. Brooks.
Yeah.
You're doing good work.
I wanted to just briefly touch on mental health, mental health, before we go. And then Steve maybe wasn't looking to discuss this necessarily, but to hear more of what we wanted to hear. And I just, I think we need to have a deeper discussion. I know we had an education committee once on what we do, but I would like to have a larger discussion on that.
Yeah, we need to, right, and we need to have Grant Wood involved, correct? I mean, that, they're, they're the ones that are-
They're part of our response team on our issues.
They're the response team and I think that that's, that's what we really need to, it, just, just to first know what, what, what is existing, where the gaps are and what we can do to, you know, to take care of that. But, yeah, that's gotta come from, we get, we have to have, get the Grant Wood reps here to kind of explain what we're getting for our $6, $8 million or whatever.
I think the last one just laid a form, I think they're executive stylists. They have some new funding from this?
They do, yep.
I think it'd be worth it, it's all work session, to dig in on what we need to do in the latter week.
And I, I would like to look at this not only for students.
Okay. So, we have served, and then like our legalizing, we can come up with-
Yeah, and I think it's been, some of it's been utilized, I think, from some of the meaning that we had on software. It didn't have enough, so it's been underused. You know, not, not enough, it's not gonna use enough.
It's not gonna use enough, yeah.
Because we don't have enough to. So, I would just like, I guess, all right, yeah.
We can put that to you.
I would like that.
Got another work session?
More than 15 minutes.
Yeah. Where we, where we can really focus on that as a topic.
Yep.
So, maybe whenever our next work session maybe is.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll reach out to the Grant Wood team because we'll want some members from the CISM team just to share with you what they do when there's crises and how they respond to them. So, let me reach out to them and see when those folks are available.
Yeah, and really, I mean, could you read, like, could this include people from like 4O's or, you know, any of the outside agencies that we also utilize, um, that have a contact there, have a contact with?
Can we get someone here from Synchrology perhaps, do you want to talk about that?
I need to write a lot more grants.
No, were you, were you talking about the agency that's going?
And I like thinking about Matt King's approach in this, like, you know, like, what 4O's is doing is like they're coming in, serving students and then they're leaving. And, um, what, what you're talking about is an integrated approach where, um, this is the person that's changing the climate at the school also to make the school work for the student better, not just counseling the student. I mean, we need all of these tools, but-
We have a lot of systems and we have a lot of resources, not enough. But the lack of coordination makes them less effective.
That's really compelling.
It's less effective.
And it's also the, the lack of changing us, changing us as a district so that we work better for the students. You know, it's, I mean, I think there's some, some, uh, good take there that we are some teaching that can go both ways. Our, our staff also needs an improved, improved climate, so.
I would, can I mention two more things since I'm here tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, just since I've been talking safety, I promise you I'll make this a minute or less. But the Sandy Hook promise, because that was on your agenda, it has four components. Say Something, which is embedded in recommendation number three of secondary, um, recommendations. Start with Hello is one of the recommendations. It's embedded in your secondary recommendation number one. Safety Assessment and Interventions is exactly threat assessment using the same model that we're talking about. And actually, that was a conference that we had all been at and Sandy Hook was presenting there. It's a Virginia model that we're looking at. The SOS signs of suicide, that's embedded into the secondary recommendation number one. And the interesting thing about this is we did write another grant and we did receive funding. And it is for putting together a youth, uh, mental health similar to SOS, but it's called something different.
MVP.
And, yeah, and so, the state is funding that training and it's similar to SOS. Um, and also, um, the funding for mental health first aid in all of our secondary schools. So, those are, that's the grant that we did receive.
The three high schools.
The three high schools for mentoring programs and-
It's youth mental health first aid, mentors and violence prevention, and then MVP student leaders.
So, so Sandy Hook, one of the recommendations is not just-
My supplementing Sandy Hook.
We are implementing the four components that are critical. I mean, they may not all be, and, and there may not all be the Sandy Hook, they're the same idea. But they are, there's different ways of doing it. And that's all I have to say.
It's helpful to know, you know?
I just, yeah, there's, we're making progress.
We're making progress, yeah. Thank you so much, appreciate it. I hope we stayed with this all night tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? In favor, hi.